Tell her, Jason, I got some.
Yeah, that's, that's no excuse. This is what you need.
Calls this regular meeting of the Gilmer County Board of Education to order for March 28, 2022. How many?
Yeah.
Jason Barr?
Yes.
Brian Kennedy? The record reflect that Brian Kennedy is not present. Dr. Miller? Lovely record reflect that Dr. Miller is not present. Jamie Hump is present. Mr. Pundit, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any delegations this evening? Any delegations? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the consenting agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the 11th special meeting, 14th special meeting, or the 14th regular meeting?
I have a petition, I'll make a motion to be approved in round two days. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Pressure carry. Clay Rock.
Hello again.
How do you do? We have some news.
Yes, been for hours. What I have tonight for a regular meeting, were there any questions with the schedule of checks to be written?
I have a question.
Any questions on the monthly financial report? Oh, three of them.
I was gonna say, you want to just do them all there?
I can.
Okay. Unless there's something specific you want to point out from one or the other.
Purchases over 5,000. That's for laptops, both for the elementary school, second grade, in the high school. I believe our tech team, I forget the exact amount, but it's $413 and something changed that they got a price for computer replacements for the counters. So I thought that was really good. That's all I have for the treasury report this evening. Any questions about those?
Any entertaining motions to approve the treasures report? It's been dinner. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Amy, I don't know what to say.
All of us in the table. Do you want us to do them separately? We don't have the authority to run that one.
No.
Let's, we probably should split them up. We'll go ahead and split them up then, so we're able to see items.
You have the majority, you have the majority of the members here. Yeah.
Don't have the majority in the vote. Okay, so we're okay then.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
We have one, Megan Hurst, 11th grader from Lewis County.
May I motion to approve? Take that, Megan, from Lewis County. Second.
But first and second, is there any discussion with transfers? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pressure carry.
Recognition of students and staff, we'll have that until April 19. We have quite a few that we want to recognize on April the 19th. Oh, well.
I have some.
You have some, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have, yes, go ahead. I knew they were coming, but.
They blew them right into here.
I was, I was gonna say that.
Because Kelly's like, I'm under, I'm under Mr. Putnam. I'm like, okay, so she's under Mr. Putnam. Sorry, guys.
So, so we've got a lot of great math things going on in Gilmer County, particularly in Gilmer County High School. And just, I'm, I'm gonna expect Mrs. Kelly Barr to come and clean up anything that I say about the M3T project through that. But my understanding is, is the Mathers Mathematics Master Teachers Program that, that she has helped spearhead here in Gilmer County is a collaborative among the National Science Foundation, West Virginia Department of Education, AIR, and I think it originated maybe in Pocahontas County Schools. I mean, that's kind of where it got its kickstart. We are one of the counties, when you look at the map for the M3T project, we're one of the counties that, that are, that are on that map. And she has helped put together a collaborative of teachers within our building that includes Morgan Allen, Mrs. Melissa Jones, who you have as well, and Mrs. Barr. And the, the purpose of this collaborative and this program, and this is a part that I would like for her to tell more about, but in areas that we found in Gilmer County High School where there's lack of student involvement, where kids don't know to, how to, have a willingness to participate in discussions, they have hands-on mathematics taught, they have real-world applications, this program encourages and shares resources among this network to be able to do those things. So Mrs. Barr from time to time will invite me to come up and, and see some of the lessons that's being taught. One that, that was taught here recently by Ms. Morgan Allen, she's not here, she's at the beach. I can't labor for that. You probably saw some of the pictures on our Facebook page of students that had menus set up behind us, and we would come and play money and, and order off that, and they would make change, and they would decide sales tax, and they acted as a liaison. Those type of activities where kids are actually engaged in math in a way that's hands-on, real-world application, is what we're striving for. And there's been several, I've come up to Mrs. Barr's room as well, observed some up there, and, and I think I just stopped in, Ms. Jones' room a couple of times this past week, and, and told her that I feel she is doing an excellent job this year. Her entire schedule changed due to maternity leave that we have, and, and she has taken on all new math classes this year and all new preps, and it's been quite a load. So I'd just like to say thank you to these three teachers in particular, and they had the opportunity recently to present at our state math conference. So at that, I'm gonna step away before I get myself in too far over my head and allow them to present some of what they've been doing.
So, like Mr. Putnam was saying, three years ago, teachers from, Joanna Kendrick from Pocahontas County and Dr. Matt Campbell from WBU approached me about being part of a pilot program to get M3T off the ground. It was funded at the time by the Benham Project at WBU. I was one of only five teachers in the entire state that was doing this work, and the following year, applied for a fellowship through the National Science Foundation and considered a voice fellow, and I'm only 25 in cohort one, and then there are another 23 or 24 in cohort two. But if you go to the M3T website, which I can share with you all at some point, one of the things that Melissa pointed out when we were at WBCTM is Gilmer County's like an island. There's no county that touches us as part of this program. Geographically, Ward is the closest one to us. So there's no one in Braxton in this program, or Lewis, or Calhoun, or any of our other really surrounding counties. What we do is really super different. Usually, professional development in our county is designed by Ms. Mason. She figures out what the greatest need is for everyone in the county, because she has to serve everyone, where through this program, we decide what we don't like about something in our classroom, something we want to change. The past couple of years with the pandemic, this has looked very different than we originally thought it would, but we've had the opportunity to get kids talking about math, not just, I came up with the answer of 10, or I divided. We're getting kids to really have in-depth conversations about their methods and what they're doing. We are currently implementing a strategy in all three of our classrooms that comes out of Pocahontas that's called CRAVE, which is an acronym that gets kids talking about math in a very structured format, requires them to use complete sentences, help me out.
Heard the question.
Yep.
Answer correctly, use vocabulary, and explain their thinking.
So we are concentrating right now on the B and the E parts of that, to get the kids to use their math vocabulary and use it correctly, and to explain their answer in depth. And we've practiced that through writing, because we decided with Ms. Allen teaching sixth grade, it was important to get those sixth graders writing that out before, because actually it's supposed to be a completely verbal answer for them to do. And what we do through this is we actually use a PDSA cycle, which is Plan New Study Act, and we actually come up with the questions that we want answered. We come up with how many times a week are we gonna take data in our classroom about this strategy and how it's working? And then from there, we're gonna decide if we're gonna keep using that strategy in our classrooms, or do we need to adapt it, or do we need to completely abandon it because it's not working? So we're making change within just our own four walls, instead of talking about big picture things. We're looking very small. What can we actually change? What are things that we actually have agency over in our own classrooms? One of the things that Morgan Allen had told me when we were at WBCTM, she was amazed that her sixth graders were using their math vocabulary outside the context of CRAVE. So they're already using those words like they should be. She's walking past tables of kids and hearing things like, in a unit rate, the denominator is supposed to be one, instead of saying the new, the bottom number, which is really a big step for that. Melissa does it on the high school side of our building with our 11th and 12th graders, so I'm gonna let her talk about how she goes with the vocabulary piece with that and gets them ready for the next thing in their life.
So a few years ago, we actually went to Pocahontas County and observed their classrooms. And after we came back from that, the high school teachers, Mrs. Delena Swite and I got together and decided we wanted to implement CRAVE. So the kids I have have seen it before, they've seen a little bit of it. So to challenge them, I gave them four specific vocab words that they had to use within their writing. And I learned, I did learn that like they can interchange some words, so it was something that I realized that we needed work on. And they like it, they asked us to do it, so.
So we're, we're seeing gains in terms of their comprehension of their vocabulary, and what we're looking for is how to fix this interchangeability. Like, it starts in sixth grade as unit rate and constant rate change, and for me in seventh grade, it turns into constant proportionality, and then when they're in eighth grade, it turns into slope, and it's all the same exact thing. We just use many different terms to describe it, which becomes really confusing for the kids, so we're hoping to fix that interchangeability and get them to understand that vocabulary better. We presented in a poster session at WBCTM as part of that M3T project. We had a poster that Joanne and Matt had us design based around our PDFAs, what we were learning. We had probably 30 people come in that poster session, visit all posters in the room, stop and talk with us. What was interesting is I've worked with a teacher from Hamlin Pre-K 8, and she teaches sixth and seventh grade, and she had seen my reshare of Morgan's work on Facebook with that decimals project, and sat with Morgan for like 10 minutes, and like, tell me how you did this, because I'm going to do this, I'm stealing this, and I'm taking it back to my school and I'm gonna do this now. And then I did a separate session with some other teachers from M3T, just some of the strategies that we use. But it allowed Melissa and Morgan to attend that conference as part of that project as well. The next things that we're starting to do as the school year winds down is we're gonna be looking at observing one another in our classrooms with a form that M3T has given us specifically, where it's not in a value, it's a value, that's a word I teach my aunt. It's not, in a, it's not an observation like we're used to, where, you know, an administrator's coming in and evaluating your process. It's gonna be something very specific, like Melissa may know, I'm seeing this with this group of kids, like I need you to observe what they're doing when I'm not helping them. How can we fix what's going on with this specific area? So it lets us have the agency over, what do I want you to come observe in my room? And there's a pre and post discussion for that as well, so that's where we're headed next. Ms. Mason has been great to help fund Melissa and Morgan's time, meet once a week on Wednesdays after school for about an hour and a half every single Wednesday to do this work. And she and Ms. Lawler have been super supportive of what we've done. And so I've got three years left on my fellowship, because it's a five-year fellowship, and hoping that we can continue what we're doing here as well with it.
I appreciate you guys coming to this forum, the invitation to the board. To me, this is one of the best things that happened to, in the process. This is what happens between teachers and students, the most important thing to pay. And I'd like to hear from those teachers and students, and I'd like to know that the teachers are interacting with themselves, they're interacting with fellow county teachers in other counties, they're interacting with state, they're interacting in national conferences, and trying to improve the situation. If you guys are working the way that you're talking tonight, our math scores have no way to go without. And I, I appreciate that. I wish every discipline in the high school works this way, and, and the elementary schools. I would hope that the teachers are involved, care of what you guys do, and continue toward the work that you're doing, because actually, the best evaluation of all is yourself. So I, I appreciate it, and I'd like to hear any kind of, like, teachers, I'd like to hear more of them, and thank you.
I'm gonna start on the projects again, just give a quick update on the projects. The high school steps, met with the gentleman today, the foreman on the job. We should see them tomorrow and Wednesday, and we should get those steps wrapped up. And again, what we're gonna see there is all the wooden steps, it's the handrail, they should scrape them, sand them, re-prime them, and paint them. That's the only work they owe us, and that will complete the step project, and we should get it completed this week. Any questions on the high school steps? Good. With the secure entry, Mantra, we did meet with the high school administration and the secretarial staff since our last board meeting on, on March 17, and they had some 3D drawings of the space. And, and in that, that's a very productive meeting. We, we know this space is gonna be similar to, to what the space is at Gilmer Elementary. And the thing about having the secretarial staff involved, those were, those are two secretaries that worked in the space at Gilmer Elementary. And if you can make the space better the second time around, let, let's make it better. So they, they had some suggestions. The architects took note, we took note, very successful meeting. We're still moving forward with this, as, as, the same timeline that I spoke about at other board meetings. We will advertise for two weeks, we'll put out the bid for two weeks. We are wanting to bring this before the board on April 25. That's when we wanted to bring it before the board, on April 25, for board approval. And again, we want demolition. I, I have been saying construction, but last board meeting, I corrected myself, we do want demolition to start on this project June 1. And the idea is, we want, we want most of this project completed, or at least get the status of substantial completion by the time our students and staff are back to school in August. So that's the goal, and right now, everything's in place for that to happen. Any questions on the secure entry Gilmer County High School? The lighting project, happy to report that Mon Valley Electric, they have almost completed everything here at the board office. You can tell the boardroom's a lot brighter than, than what it was. Here, in this building, when I say almost completed, they still need to do the gym, so they still owes the gym, outside lighting, and then we have some classrooms, especially on this end of the hallway, that have some bathrooms in it or little closets in them, they didn't have the correct bulbs for those. So this building, there was the gym, outside lighting, and little closets or little bathrooms within the offices, and that will finish this building. So that happened in about a week, so that may move in right along. Today, they moved in at the high school. I don't think any lighting would have today. I think they moved the materials from over here to over there to, to start tomorrow. They are gonna take advantage of us being on spring break, so this week and this week earlier, they are gonna work 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they'll be at Gilmer County High School. Next week, when we return to school with staff and students, they'll, they'll most likely go back to their 6:00 PM shift to 6:00 AM, so they'll work nights once we're back in session. They aren't gonna start in the upper, in the, in the upstairs classrooms, that's where they're gonna start in that building. Mr. Putnam and I spoke today briefly. They're gonna store some materials upstairs in a, in a mechanical custodial closet. They won't get in our way, I think we'll be fine there. Then they're gonna store the majority of the stuff in a visitor's locker room in the gymnasium, and that door's locked during the school day. They were thrilled, thought it would save them a lot of time, as opposed to traveling back and forth here to the board office to get their things. So, so good things happening with lighting. Any questions on lighting? The HBAC, we're still at the same place we were last time I recorded, we're just waiting for the units to come in. They are ready to go to work when the units come in. That best timeframe I can give you is we will have units start arriving the last week of June. If the units do arrive the last week of June, we are still very hopeful that the majority of that scope of work will get to substantial completion by the time school starts back with staff and the students. Now, obviously, if the material doesn't come in, if those units don't come in, then, then that's not gonna happen. Everything's based on that lead time. But that's what they're being told right now, end of June, we can see work starting as soon as the units arrive, and we can get started on that. Any questions on HBAC? Perfect. I'm gonna change my terminology a little bit on this, but this has been commonly referred to, and probably my fault more than anybody, because it's what I stood up here and said every meeting, the meat shop. We're, we're gonna try, and super pretend I'll do the best I can, to change my terminology on this to the animal processing classroom. But, but I'm talking about the meat shop. Please don't think it's a different, don't think it's a different project if we're adding another project to you. We're just gonna try to, as we move forward with this, change our terminology a little bit to the animal processing classroom. We did turn in the MIP project that I spoke to the board about the last couple of board meetings. It was turned in on March 25. Within that project, and don't hold me to the, to the penny here, but basically, we're asking the SBA for about $800,000. That $800,000 would cover most of the construction cost, the walls being built, the grease traps, the rooms, things like that. That's, that's what the 800,000. We would put a county match to that, our general county match is 10%. We'd have a county match to that of 80,000 if we were awarded the project. And then as a side note, because we're, we're trying to offer up, what's Gilmer County? Hoping the SBA will look at this more faithfully, what's Gilmer County adding to this? So we're adding 10%, which is 80,000. And then we're also, as a side note, contributing $400,000 that I've spoken about several times. Clay has fancy initials for it, I'm gonna call COVID money, but we have $400,000 also devoted to this project, approved for this project, and that money would be spent mostly on equipment. So the SBA funds mostly on construction, the 400,000 that we have devoted to it would be spent on equipment.
And can you tell them why on equipment? Because if we spend it on construction, we have to use the.
Davis Bacon Wages.
Davis Bacon Wages, which is considerably more than my SBA. So that, that is why the 400, we're looking at the equipment.
What, the, last time I was here, I spoke about a worst-case scenario, and I do believe this is a worst-case scenario, and when I say worst-case, I should probably term that better. It makes it sound like it's a, a bad situation or something. I, I don't think it's a bad situation at all. At the end of the day, if Gilmer County Schools is looking at $400,000 to, to start an animal processing classroom, I mean, that's a, that's a heck of a start. And, and I'm just calling that our worst-case scenario, because it, it's not all the bells and whistles, but still, that's a pretty good start. I was also, last time I was front of you, we were asked to, to try to get Mr. Cox's opinion on this, it's our in-house, our in-county expert on this. I don't think anybody would deny that he would definitely be the best person to speak to, what do we need, what do we want, what do we have to have, all that kind of good stuff. We did try to make that happen in a face-to-face meeting, and it was just a kind of tagging on to another meeting, just to be perfectly honest. We had the SBA, or the architect, coming to talk about the secure entry to high school, why he was on site for a visit. They said, can we go out to the, to the animal processing classroom? Can we go out there, take some pictures, talk about that? We did invite Mr. Cox that meeting, unfortunately, we invited Mr. Cox that meeting on probably his busiest day of the year. He was doing the ham and bacon sale that day. So he was running around a little bit crazy, so that, that was, that was completely unfair of us, even probably to invite him, but we did, and, and completely understood why he was unable to attend. And from what I hear, we had our best ham and bacon day ever, that day. So obviously, he was all the one really good things. We did, however, in a really impromptu meeting, Clay and I, me calling Clay, hey, can you come over here, let's call the architect, talking to the architect, hey, if we can by chance get Mr. Putnam on the phone, if we can by chance get Mr. Cox on the phone, I'm calling the high school to see what Mr. Cox's plan period is, because I, I don't know what his plan period is. And Charlene actually says, hey, just walked by. And I said, well, hey, get me Mr. Putnam. And really, this is how this happened. So he gets me Mr. Putnam, and these guys work with us, and within about three minutes there, we've got Mr. Cox, Mr. Putnam, Clay, myself, and the architect, at least on a phone call. And we had a really good conversation about, about this animal processing classroom, about this scenario, this scenario, this scenario, and I'll let, I'll let, hopefully, under me maybe, unless it's somewhere else on the agenda, that Mr. Cox could speak about this.
Yeah, we gotta do that whole business.
Okay. Just at some point, I definitely wanted to have the opportunity. The last thing I would say about, I still believe, after everything we know right now, I still believe that it's gonna be in our best interest at Gilmer County Schools to kind of stay forth with a plan, to kind of stay with the plan, and we just turned in the MIP project, the SBA. We will find out the results of that SBA project, whether we're gonna get 800,000 or not, to help us on this, June 13. That's the day we'll find out. I think at that time, as soon as we can, we bring the, the best plan at that time to this board. If we're getting that 800,000, I think we'll have the animal processing classroom that you dream about. I think we'll have all the bells and the whistles. I don't think our students or our teacher would want for anything in that room if we get awarded the money. If we don't get awarded the money, I think it's boom, on to Plan B. Do we have any other funds? We know we have 400,000. Is there any way to come up with the rest of it? To get all the bells and whistles, to get the absolute best for our students? That's kind of Plan B. Plan C, all right, nobody threw in, we don't have any, we have the 400,000. And again, I keep calling it the worst case, I need to, I'll just refer, try to, from now on, Plan C is we have 400,000 to put towards us, and we get together with the high school administration, the staff, Mr. Cox, and we come up with the best plan for Plan C at that point, which would be the 400,000 already approved for this project. I still think that's the best course of action for Gilmer County Schools. I'll keep quiet, and you have Mr. Cox an hour, or when you decide later.
I mean, in a way, I just wanna see what is, what is a place in our business.
I'll move you up on the agenda, I'll say.
Yeah. I tried to organize myself a little bit. So, if this sounds kind of monotone, I'm really not used to reading off the paper, okay? But thanks for having me. There's been a lot of discussion in the last few weeks about the animal processing lab. Through multiple meetings, like mostly in the last week, and even a phone conference, I think there's a really solid plan put together that I've got to give some input, and I support the plan, really do. Plan A, to fully have, to have a fully functioning processing lab, we're seeking 800,000 from the SBA. This process would be, in my opinion, the very best for us, because it gets us everything we want, all added in. This option includes having the lab, everything that's needed, and being built in a way that it will last, and that will not have to continue to raise money to add anything to it. And being built this way, I do believe we'd have one of the nicest facilities in the state. Furthermore, I plan to provide documents on the animal processing class. This data would include how many years the class has been taught, how many have been enrolled in the class, and test scores on retail meat cut ID from this year's program, because I think I've had some kids that have scored really well, and just me having to teach them based off of pictures. I think that'd be good. And I also plan to seek some letters of support that may aid in this process, maybe from the commissioner of agriculture himself. The request, SBA, has been submitted, and if possible, I'd like to be there when they go to present to answer any questions they might have. If that's a thing that's possible, I might build up with that. Plan B, I'm kind of going along with what Joe said. If Plan A does not work in our favor, the other sources from outside funding can be explored. Plan C, if Plans A and B don't do in our favor, then we would have to use the $400,000 to construct as much as possible. At this time, this would roughly include the main dividing wall between the new meat animal processing lab. And the existing ad shop, okay? It would also provide an entryway. It would also provide an entryway into both from the hallway, which is needed, and the smoker room to be able to house and run the smoker that we have. This plan will also include the floor, the floor drains for the full shop so that other rooms and equipment could be added at a later date. I have begun and will continue to price walk-in cooler, vacuum sealer, and other items needed on top of that. I spoke with the head meat inspector from the West Virginia Department of Ag last week to make sure I understood the minimum needed to have a ham and bacon operation. I'm confident that if we need to resolve on Plan C, that from CTE money, leftover equipment money, and money raised for the program at the sale last week, we could be working with our products in this facility if we have to resort to Plan C. In closing, I'd like to say thank you and that I'm in full support of the processing Plans A through C. I'm in support of waiting to see if the SBA approves a full project and going through the backup plans as needed. I do believe this is the best thing going forward. I'd also like to thank Patty Louden, Joe Frazier, Clay Chesser, Mr. Putnam, and Greg Martin of Williams and Traver for giving me a better understanding of the options we have in front of us. Can I answer any questions?
I can probably answer one that you're thinking, why are we not calling it Meat Lab? We went with animal processing classroom because when you submit a project to SBA, you get points. And there's an educational section that they really look at to make sure that if the money is going to benefit the children, all the children. So, we, I changed the terminology to animal processing classroom, which is the same thing. It's just, it goes along with that CTE program. And I added the standards that were in there. And also innovation, and Mr. Putnam had, when we were talking about this, once it becomes operational, then we can blend it into our family and consumer science and have kind of like a farm-to-table, uh-huh, and the canning and the processing so they could work together. So, hopefully, we'll get some points on the SBA because they, they look at that. So, that's why it's still Meat Lab, but it's animal processing classroom.
And I'm 100%, I mean, I'm 100% supportive of this too. I mean, I would love it if we could start construction tomorrow. But at the same time, if we're going to do it, try to do it right, get as much as what we can. You know, it's taken a little longer, I think, than what we had hoped and what we had expected. I was really hoping that my senior would be able to experience it. But hey, with the kids going further and, and wanting to do this and the amount of kids that want to do this, you know, down the road, I mean, I know Mr. Cox, you know, can't take 50 students to process ham and bacon in Gilmer County right now. I mean, it's hard enough just to work with the kids that he has. And this is many late nights, many evenings, back and forth, you know, plus everything else they have to do. And they still have a successful program. So, imagine how much more successful it'll be if it's local and they're able to do all these things here. And if anybody was at the ham and bacon sale, to hear these seniors get up and speak about what this program has done for them, not just FFA in general, but also the ham and bacon program and, you know, the things that they said about Mr. Cox and his support to them, it was absolutely amazing. Tear jerker, actually. But we did want to hear from you as far as what your opinion was in all of this because, again, this is kind of your baby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. The presentation and the work we do for our kids up there. Yeah, we still have, I think, fifteen, twelve years now, how much they've gained. We've been working on this project for a long time. It seems like it's ever been a jerk. But hopefully, it can get done and, and you and the students can do much better than us. And I think many times in education, we forget about CTE classrooms and the things that are needed for our students. That is something that, that I think the law could, you know, could. I've seen students graduating from the program there. Twenty years now, the skills they might now pay off in the job that they got, information. You learn a lot of things out of the just ham and bacon. So, there's just a lot of things to go along with this program. So, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate you coming to talk to us. And anytime we have anything, I will definitely come and join you.
The only other thing, and I know we talked about this at the last meeting, is maybe having some of the kids and getting with maybe some of the videos in the past with Mr. Buckley, putting together a little short clip that they can take.
Yeah, I was going to embed it in the presentation because you can do a PowerPoint. So, yeah. And Mr. Cox and I have spoken about that, so we just got to get with Mr. Buckley and get it pulled together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm finished if you're finished. For now. I'm back up later on then.
I have nothing.
What?
Lose a kid?
Right, right. Sometimes it's all. Okay, Mr. Putnam. Start kind of.
I have, I guess, a little bit of my notice here, what you'd like to. Sir. Yes, sir. I'll throw something at you before I get to item six.
Thank you.
There's a lot of, a lot of exciting things. I, I guess the most recent one is Ryan Baran, who's a senior at Gilmer County High School. He is the welding champion of the state of West Virginia just from this past weekend. And we were, we were thrilled to hear that. When I talked to Ryan over the weekend, he said, I think I'm going to Atlanta. I'm getting there. What it is, he said, I think I go to Atlanta. But that's just fantastic. If you've seen the photos of him in his red jacket, the metal hanging off of it, you'd say, is that Ryan Baran? And we're just, we're just really proud of him. So, that's, that's the first thing. Before I get into all the things about assessment, have some good things there first. School Day SAT is scheduled for April 13th for all of our 11th graders. And we've had training of the staff of this week in our schools. The admin, the counselors, Tracy DeWall has been phenomenal help with that and Daniel Reed as well. And for the SAT School Day stuff, it's, it's in the mail. A lot of our secures, things are in the mail and coming to us presently. So, I've got tracking numbers. We've kind of been watching what's going on there. So, that's coming to school this year soon. General Summit of Assessment will be April the 25th or the 28th for us for grades six through eight. We've also had training of, of that staff as well. Mr. Payne has been instrumental in the General Summit of Assessment training. And Tracy Corse is helping us with that too, being our assessment coordinator for our district. PSAT is a new assessment for us. We're adding in assessments for all of our ninth and 10th graders. There seems to be a gap to me between eighth grade and 10th grade and, and having our eighth grade and 11th grade. I've had no data for those two years, seeing how we're growing and how we're doing. And then by the time any 13ers are taking the SAT, sometimes it's a little too late when we make adjustments in the senior year, in my opinion. So, the district approved of that. We worked those tests. This will be new for us. It's not an accountability. It's not something the state tells us we have to do. It's not something we'll be held accountable, held accountable to by the state of West Virginia. It's just something that Gilmer County Schools will know about how our ninth graders and 10th graders are doing. So, that is underway. And Michael Fox has been leading that work to prepare us for that assessment. It's going to be during the week of GSA, so it's, I was advised not to do so. But, but that's the, that's the window that hit our school system the best, given break and having it too early, backing it up and having it in February. So, there's, there's a lot of variables that that window for PSAT matches with us. So, we've got a plan in place and we've got a lot of people trained. And it's going to be a testing phenomenal week.
At least it's all at once.
On the week of April. Yeah, that's, I mean, the bells are off that week, right? Okay, then there'll be makeup tests and things that happen as well. Could be that we have anybody that needs a makeup test from the SAT School Day. It's earlier in April. That also hits during that week. So, we could be doing three or four major assessments during that week. So, we'll see how that goes. We have recently, in the, in the past week, teachers have submitted names for the academic banquet. I know there's some questions about the academic banquet and from the last time that I presented. I gave some of the data, not the data, but maybe the language that we use with our teachers, the conversation we have with the funder, kind of the parameters of a high school banquet, what that looks like. And we're planning a middle school recognition. It might be an assembly and a pizza party. It might be an assembly. It might be a pizza party. We're thinking suggestions for the middle school team about that. But that is, that will be for the middle school. There'll be 37 middle schoolers so far that we received names of, of teachers that have sent those names to us and 55 of our high school. That's about 22 and a half percent of our student population. That's a pretty good chunk of kids when you look at the percentage of kids that we're recognizing school-wise. Kind of the flip side of that would be, we, we talked about the former method, use of GPA, method to recognize students. Our recent third nine-weeks GPA had almost 50% of our students making the honor roll. So, there's, there's a lot of students making the honor roll. Sixth grade, for example, 81% of sixth graders made the honor roll in the third nine weeks. That's, that's fantastic. I can't wait to see their assessment scores. I hope they're through the roof this year. So, we congratulate them on their, on their academic performance on their grade cards. To, to use that as our only metric to recognize students at an academic banquet would put us at 200 kids plus. And that is more than we're able to take for this banquet and the funding that we have and the space that we have provided and such. So, I don't mean to, you know, I know there's disagreement, maybe sides, different sides of that. I don't mean to poke at that at all, but just to say that's just another reason our GPAs are, are pretty high. And if we, if we use that, it would be, it would, it would be a lot of students. I did recognize a type of, there's a top, Atlanta, Georgia, it's not Atlanta GAM. So, I'm not sure what happened up there, that, up the top of page. All right, page two. And we have some large events that are planned. Academic banquet, of course, on April 23rd. Prom, which is April 30th, that's going to be a pretty good thing to have in our way we have. Committees of teachers, actually have a planning, activities, planning, making two of what's called. That, that take the charge of this and work to help us plan things like prom and graduation and, and senior trip. Those being some big items. Prom will be April 30th, it's pretty early this year. Then we have the National Honor Society of Dutch, and that's new for us. We haven't done that in several years at Gilmer County High Schools, and we brought that back. And we're looking forward to that on May 7th. Want to put some of these on your, on your calendars. Graduation will be May 27th. Obviously, that's a large item as well. We're, we're planning a, what's called a Titan Clash, the community and schools program. This, this idea was brought to me by some high school senior boys. And then I conferred with our communities and schools and asked how we might be able to make this happen. Senior coed basketball game to reward students between the periods of April 4th and April 25th of having no discipline referrals and less than two absences. And we're going to have a, during the school day and give that as a reward and allow students to attend that. And that'll be on May 3rd. You're welcome to attend any or all of these events. Just would like to make mention of that in case you did not have an invitation, so it's yours, for members. We had a meeting, and, and I think maybe Mr. Frazier is going to speak to this. I don't know if he is or not. Maybe you already have the school calendar.
I will.
Well, we had a meeting with the administrators that the idea, I think, came to the board that we would ask our students about our school calendar. So, I said, well, if we're going to have Mr. Frazier talk about the school calendar to our student council, I'll go ahead and talk about the strategic plan at Gilmer County High School. And, and we'll talk about, we had a couple other items on here. Discussion of our school initiative vision, if they do what it was, what it means. If they agree with it, if they thought there's parts of it that needed to be added to or taken away from. And also to have a selection of our student council, a, a member of student council to be part of our LSIC committee. And, and that's going to be my hub. She's, she's going to be the representative to the LSIC. Our first LSIC, I don't know, here's April 5th. It is, if I just keep rolling. And we have a school leadership team meeting this, this coming week after we come back to school to discuss our strategic plan on, I think that is April 6th, I think that's on your page. That's when that one's happening. And then just a couple of comments there about grades earned for the third nine weeks, which is at the bottom of your page, not mentioned at all. Do you have any questions for me as administrator of Gilmer County High School?
I'm going to see if all of those are actually coming together. This part, you know, academics, getting back to National Honor Society. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's like I've been smoking for 20 years, though, this coffee, I think it will go away. And not just looking at grade four.
You know, it's, it's kind of a nice problem to have and struggling to keep up with all of these our kids have done. And I know Nick has a group of kids that we're all champions at the region that's going to come back and, as well. And there's, there's basketball teams we'd like to bring before you to recognize and, and other things that's happened. We're looking forward to some, some large, you know, academic contests as well. To bring before you presents. It's, it's a good problem to have, trying to keep track of all those things that we can celebrate. But definitely, definitely thankful to have good things to celebrate.
And seeing those, those things too, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Seeing those things put on our Facebook pages and stuff too, for the community to see, for us to share. A lot of people don't realize, I think, that, you know, a lot of these things are going on. They only give negative. But Gilmer County's doing some great things, even to let people know those great things that we're doing, so.
It's academic as well as athletic.
Yeah.
And there's a great number of kids that's going through it right now. If there's something else that you'd like to see when I'm presenting, if you'd like to see less time, more time, if there's data, if there's some, I'd just let Ms. Louden know what you'd like when the principals present. I'd be more than happy to make that time as beneficial for you as soon as I can.
I appreciate that. I think we're going to have that discussion at club point. That way, everybody's time here is beneficial and because we're making progress and all.
Mr. Price had went to see his father, so he's not here.
Career Center was entering, reports is down there, people say that they did have the John Fair there. It's well attended. I think it was thirty something acres. It worked well. The, the competition has been through it. We talked about the one in Rockland, one in Welland, state championship. And the culinary arts class, I know one first place in their state competition. There is, the one thing I don't want to forget to remind you, there is a summer program offered at Career Center for students. They call it a summer camp. They try to make it a fun thing for students to do in many different areas. One area is in this, this area, a lot of students do, they hunt and fish. So, they're offering a hunter's safety course. If they get a certificate, if they finish it, and they can get their hunting license. You have to have that, you know, to get a hunting license. And there's many, many different things that they're offering in summer camps. There's some. There's summer. I don't know what the trend is, if anything, from here. Maybe it might be something we want to look at in the future. It's probably too late to do anything this year. But if students, if we have a lot of students that want to get involved. I think offering these summer camps and having things for students during the summertime is extremely important because idle students are not good days. They need to have things they enjoy doing, like that they can want to go and be in during, during the summer times. And they're, they're like set for like a two-week period. They aren't like all summer. You gotta just go for a camp. And the other thing that they have done down there, they built what they call a stargate thing. Building out there on the ridge of Calvin County. And it's away from everything. They don't have any grandparents. They have people coming from colleges all over. Nowhere to come out there to visit it, so. If, if there's any, any students interested or you know, students that would like to go into the activities. I asked them to send, and I'm sure Mr. Reed at the high school has copied the, the program that's offered this summer. So any child there, any student there that's interested in anything, Mr. Reed should have that information. Maybe you have students button them. I don't know.
I heard that he does have.
I asked them to make sure that they sent it to our high school so they would have that to present our kids. But there are a lot of good things going on there. These TTE programs are really great for a lot of kids. And the, the academics, we're doing great with that as well. And I, I think there's a lot of good things. But the more you keep the kids involved in CTE classrooms, academic, athletic, the less problems you're going to have of this. So I think we're, we're trying hard as the board to understand that. But that, that's all I have for the board on the, for the session.
After school, after school ACT tutoring. We, we all met as administrators and we're not quite sure the ACT because we take SAT. But we do have after-school tutoring. So if a child did want to have some help with that, test strategies, then, you know, they could stay for after-school tutoring. It's, it's there if they want to. Because we don't say it's just math, science, reading, whatever. It's whatever they need help in. Mr. Putnam, do you want to elaborate a little bit on that too?
A couple of things. Yeah, we, we could definitely have after-school tutoring towards ACT. We also have test prep, which is an actual course that we offer that, that we try to target kids that are in the tenth grade and the eleventh grade. I don't think we have seniors this year. I'm hoping we did have seniors in that to make them want to retake tests, but I don't think we do this year. And the test prep looks at particular questions, versions of the ACT, old test editions, SAT questions. And that has been taught this past couple of years when this is doing. So that, that too is another part of that that I think is strengthening. We get more kids in that course. We sometimes have the same digits in that course like we do this year and not taking advantage of it as much as we could.
I was going to say, you know, this is just a thought that I just had too, after listening to you guys talk and, and some things that you're trying to determine as far as strengths in math. Because math seems to be one of the areas that students struggle with in the ACT and SAT both. And that's not just Gilmore County. That's nationally. That's why we have so many colleges that they have to do entry, you know, programs in order to get into the right math so they can, when they start college. But we're starting the PSAT as well, you know, so we may have students that could be identified early on if their math scores are lower at that point. And knowing that tutors, tutoring is available, that maybe just kind of even throw it out there that, you know, that this isn't, our tutoring just isn't for, you know, students that are struggling in an area. Maybe they, they want support for the ACT or SAT in addition to that. Just so, you know, families are aware. But the tutoring is there. I mean, I know mine has gone and got after-school tutoring when she struggled with a specific course. So it's available to all students, I think. Not recreating the wheel at this point. Go ahead and use what we have and do our benefit. We have very, very few that participate. Right, that's what I understood, yeah. And we have four teachers there. And, and we're fortunate because we have people who have a social studies, we have a math, we have an English person there. And we even have a science person. So we offer, we even have the CISs encourage kids and try to get them there in the after-school program. But we, we just still have very few that participate.
Shelley, if my student, if my student performs on the ACT at twenty-seven and I wanted to have thirty, can I put them in tutoring?
There, yes, you can put them in after-school. We even have.
There's no, the guidelines, you don't have to start a guideline math to be. If they want to improve their score, they can get it improved, right?
Yes.
Or get tutored, they got to improve. You're not guaranteed they'll improve, but you'll tutor.
Well, tutors, yes. I mean, we're not going to guarantee that they're going to have a thirty-two on the ACT.
But that's, that's good to know. I mean, lots of times you take the ACT or SAT, you don't quite get to where you want because you plan to go to a college somewhere that requires a little more. But it's good that you can go and up your point, love the sun.
And I think that's one of the reasons why we switched to the SAT a while back because, you know, we had kids that were going out of state and the ACT is not used out for outstate, you know, and so we switched to the SAT.
I think many colleges.
Yeah, and the state provides us too.
I might be wrong about this, but I think many colleges, it used to be really important, most important thing is, one of the most important things was the Asian care and the D score. And applying college anymore, that's not necessarily true. They take into consideration what you've done in the school.
Your GPA.
Yeah, your GPA, what clubs were you in, what was your activity, all these things are considered. So it's important, not that it's bad, but it's not an important issue.
A lot of schools are allowing test optional, which means, you know, because you have some kids that just are not good test hakers. Plain and simple. I mean, you know, they, they just can't take tests. So if their entry was based on this test scores only, they may not get in. So some schools have switched to test scores optional because you have kids that may have an extremely high GPA and comparable test score. But for those that do want to improve their test scores, we have the means and the ability to help them out. The tutoring is not just for somebody that's failing. And I think that's kind of what a lot of kids think. Cause I'm, you know, oh my gosh, my friends are going to see me go on tutoring. They must think I'm failing. But that's not the case. It's a, it's a support. And, and hopefully our kids use it even more because we're very fortunate to have so many teachers that we have in the disciplines that we have during our school.
And then the incentive follow-up. Shelley has created a form. And do you want to speak a little bit on that too?
That wasn't what I planned on speaking.
Well, but.
Then I can. Well, they're, they're open-ended questions. The, the first one, I believe, right off the top of my head, it asks about which incentives be provided, the different types of incentives that should be provided. And then there's one that specifically addresses attendance and what incentives should be provided to promote attendance. And I am hoping to send that out to the, the staff tomorrow. I sent it out to the administrators and they sent back feedback and I'm going to bring it out tomorrow. So do you think you'll have something for the next board meeting? I, I will have, I will have results. I don't know how many results I have. Sometimes it's under surveys. Sometimes that's, that's slow.
And the questions are, when do you believe staff incentives should be offered? Please list any type of incentive that you believe would promote a strong sense of well-being. Please list any type of incentive that you believe would promote a more advantageous work environment. Is there a specific incentive that you believe would be, help decrease staff absenteeism? Is there any additional information you would like to share concerning incentives for Gilmore County staff? Those are the opening questions.
Who's standing that out? Who to? Who's it going to?
Every, every staff member in Gilmore County. Bus drivers, custodians.
All the staff in the county.
Yes.
Taking this incentive survey. You're going to get that survey back and then what are you going to do with it?
I will look at the data and do a spreadsheet and try to plug those in because not everyone's going to say the same thing. It's my own choice. So it'll take a little bit of time to.
Do you have anybody to help you with that?
I'll have someone help me with that.
That's, you know, that, that, I would be curious as to how you're going to resolve all those, because they're going to be quite.
Very carefully.
Quite carefully.
And we'll, we'll, the administrators will get together too and work on this. We'll have an administrative meeting, so.
That's why Shelley loves data and orders. She's our data guru.
Yes.
If anybody can figure it out, she can.
Survey the staff, you get their input and you bring it back and the administrators will be, they'll come up with something. Incentive package. And then that will bring it be brought to the board.
Right. And play, play heavily involved because, you know, monetarily, our big thing is that we don't want to give them something and then for this year and then next year say, oh, sorry, we don't have that, you know, funding. So we're being very careful.
To be able to sustain.
Sustain, yes.
Right.
Whatever it is, it will sustain.
Appreciate that information.
And then the camera policy. You have a copy of it. We all sat down together again. And then over this, this is for you to review before we put it out on draft. For you to have time to have comments and anything. So hopefully we're going to bring it back next board meeting in a draft form once you have input as well on this. So if you see something on this policy that, you know, you don't agree or you think something needs added, then please email me and we'll get back as administrators again and work on this.
Did you put a copy of that policy?
Yes, it's under information on this.
So, so you want any questions or anything emailed to you by what date?
Uh, I don't know, eight, uh, next four meetings are nineteenth, so.
Next board meeting, week eleven.
The eleventh, okay. So the week before that, I mean, or, so what date would that be? April fourth? Okay, April fourth.
And then you guys will meet after you receive our comments and have the draft to us at next board meeting.
Yes.
It'll be.
Yes. But that was information for you. So you can see where we're going with that. No, that's an amended agenda because what we did have on there, we need to pull back off because we have to look at some personnel. So that's why it was pulled back off. So we don't want to, as Mr. Boothby said, put the cart before the horse. So that's why it was amended.
All right, so we have our old and finished business.
With the school calendar for next year, we've had our two required public hearings. We met with student council on Friday and that, that was fun. I guess while I was out of the office Friday morning, Mr. Putnam had called me and he's reminded me about this meeting and he, and at the very end he says, Joe, we have a forty-minute block. We have three things we've got to cover. And then he said, you and I need to be briefs. Well, I didn't listen to his message until I returned from the meeting. So I, I went to this meeting with student council and of his forty-minute block, I took thirty minutes of it.
No way.
Yeah, Mr. Putnam, I apologize. I, I didn't get your message until after the fact, but, but I think the kids would have rather heard from me than him anyway. I think. But no, but no, it was, it was, it was a good meeting. That was fun. Student council, I was expecting to walk in there with a group of about eight students, five, eight students. That's a group. I don't know what the number is, but it's like thirty. And, and it was a good group. Good, good group of kids. They asked great questions. So that, that was a lot of fun. I told them, just put me on the calendar. I'll be back. And so that was fun. So I shared it with them. We also met with our professional development council, as I, as I told you in the last meeting. And then Mr. Price also shared with the draft form of our calendar with his LSIC in, in that meeting. So it's been shared with several folks since the last time I was before you guys. What we have tonight, if the board's ready to devote one and, and if the superintendent wishes me to do this. What I have, I have the draft copy. It's the same as I've been giving you. On the back of that, there's a copy of Calhoun's approved calendar and Lewis County's approved calendar. So last time I was before you, we didn't have their approved calendar. The biggest differences, and I'll just highlight the differences real quick, with the Calhoun calendar. And again, the importance of our calendar being similar to Calhoun's is obviously is the Career Center. We don't want to be off by too much there. And this current draft calendar for Gilmore County, we're off three days. We're off August seventeenth. They would be in session. We would not be with students. So, so Mr. Price and Mr. Penny, they don't have to find a way to babysit or what we're going to do with Career Center. That's a professional learning day. So that day, you know, that's, that's not an issue for us. There are two school days where it would be an issue that Calhoun, if, if the Career Center adopts Calhoun's school calendar, there'd be two school days, November seventh and January third, that the Career Center would be in session and, or we would be in session and the Career Center would not be in session. So those are the other two differences. We did talk to the high school administration. They're aware of the differences and they think they can make do with those differences. With Lewis County, Lewis County did, I brought you two examples of Lewis County's calendar and they went with the one we did not think they would go with. So that's the way it always works when you, when you, when you try to guess what someone will do. But they would want the biggest differences of the Lewis County calendar. And again, that's important to us because we share Leeding Creek. And we have three buses that transport Gilmore County kids to Leeding Creek. So it's important for us to have a similar calendar with Lewis County. They are going to start two days later. So with starting two days later than us, they will go two days longer than us. So that's a big difference there. Well, a difference of two days. And then also they're going to be out on April twenty-ninth. And I'm sure that's because they share Career Center with Upsher and Barber. And Upsher's got to be out on April twenty-ninth due to the strawberry festival. And which the strawberry festival happening in Upsher County has nothing to do with anything going on in Gilmore. But, but that's why Lewis went with that. So with all that being said, with the differences we have of Calhoun and Lewis, we still believe the draft you have in front of you best suits Gilmore County's needs. We want to be closely aligned with these counties. We don't want to be too far off because of, again, the Career Center and Leeding Creek. But we still have to do what we think is in the best interest of Gilmore County. And any group that we spoke to, the teachers that were part of the staff development meeting, those teachers, some comments I remember, they, they loved that we threw them in. I think that is for three or four years. They love the professional learning days. They liked that we thrown that in. They have also commented, I told you, we threw in two, three-day at least weekends. One four-day weekend for staff, one three-day weekend in that long haul between Christmas break and spring break. They, they appreciate that. They also noted they appreciated our attempt on this year's calendar, which is different than anything we've done before for that professional learning day on August seventeenth, our attempt to give them two days in their classroom. We know two days is still not enough. We, we asked teachers to do more than we've ever asked them to do before. And we know two days is still not enough in their classrooms. With principals, leave them alone. Let them go work. Let them get ready for these kids. But two days is better than one. And, and I think they appreciated that. The student council, they really just appreciated kind of maybe a better understanding. And I'm sure it kind of, I'm sure they were spinning by to that was a, that was a sharp group of kids, Mr. Putnam, a real sharp group. And if Mr. Putnam went there to bail me out of some questions, they were asking some tough questions. And he had to, he had to jump in a couple of times and bail me out. But, but anyways, all I've heard with the groups that we spoke to are nothing but positive comments about the calendar. It is very similar to our calendars of the past. So if I were recommended tonight and. So if I were recommended tonight, and Ms. Lala, I know that's you, I would recommend the draft calendar before the board to be accepted as our calendar. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Yeah, I just appreciate the fact you're involved in students and staff and adults in the calendar, because they can feel like they're a part of it, and I'm sure the reflection is incredible. And I'm glad to hear that report of how well the students react.
So my recommendation is to approve the draft calendar that is in front of you for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
All right, there's been a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor signify if I say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Call of duty twenty-one, twenty.
Uh, you got to do.
Oh, wait, I missed the what? Sorry.
Animal processing.
Oh, wait, what? Look at the old, the old one.
Yeah.
Okay. The animal processing classroom, post construction MIP.
It would be my recommendation that we follow what's been presented by Mr. Frazier and Mr. Fox with plans A, B, and C, that, you know, we submit that we did submit it, we wait to see if we were awarded the grant, the funding. If not, we go to B, and if not, C. That would be my recommendation for moving forward with the animal processing lab.
All right, there's been a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion? Do we want to add any dates? For example, if if MIP's not approved, that, you know, the group will convene, you know, immediately after to to move forward, that way we're not waiting months.
We've got to pad with Mr. Fox, Gilmore.
Yeah.
All right. All right. All those in favor signify if I say aye. Any opposed?
Do you want to do them all together or separate?
All together.
All together?
All together.
Okay. For professional, Robin James, substitute teacher, Gilmore County Schools. Jennifer McNeely, substitute teacher, Gilmore County Schools, and that's restricted, associate degree, that's our first one.
Second.
Our second one with an associate degree. Service, Tammy Smith, custodian, Gilmore County Elementary School. Triton Brady, substitute custodian, Gilmore County Schools. Terry Wymer, substitute custodian, Gilmore County Schools. Troy Cockrell, resignation, custodian of Gilmore County High School, and was effective March one, twenty twenty-two. An extracurricular, Danae Dobbins, resignation, head mini girls basketball coach, effective three sixteen twenty-two.
I think a motion takes up the personnel as presented by superintendent. Is there a person, a second? Any further discussion on the personnel list? All those in favor signify if I say aye. Any opposed?
In your packet is the contract for my my contract for next year, and I wanted everyone to have it so you can see it, and then we can sign it when this is over and Lisa can notify, notify us of it. And then other information, we've had a lot to report, so I think we've covered everything that I have to report. The administration team are really appreciative. We get together and it's not a forty-five minute meeting. I mean, it's four hours most of the time, and we have this deep, rich conversation about curriculum, about buildings. I mean, it it's a team process, and I really do appreciate everyone who comes and works at this meet, the meetings that we have.
Are there any board member comments?
I just had a question. On the policy, you took out the meeting this time, are you getting information from the board to make sure that these things that we adopt are all legal because?
Yes, sir.
We don't want to get into the problem.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We just want to thank everybody for the talk coming too. There's a lot of reports and discussions that we have at these meetings, and I know we put a lot of time into them, so we appreciate that. Is there anything further, Jason, you have anything?
Please.
If there's nothing further, I think we're going to return. All those in favor. Let's go.